Evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting of Stratford City Council order. Begin this evening's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I'm clerk for meeting is yours.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Council of Burbak.
Thank you. Yes, item nine point three point five, the two thousand twenty-two community grant requests and recommendations. I have a business relationship with Inner Chamber, and I'm on the board of Here for Now Theater Company.
Thank you. Council Beatty.
Item nine point one point four, request for exemption to a noise control bylaw for the Stratford Live Music and Food Event. I own a business that will be participating at that event.
Thank you. Any others? Next item.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the special meeting dated April sixth and the regular meeting dated April eleventh of council of the corporation of the city of Stratford be adopted as printed.
Move by. Thank you, Council Ritzma and Council Vazalacos. Discussion. Seeing none all in favor. Post Fanny. And it's carried. Thank you.
Item four is adoption of the addendum, and there is no addendum to be added. So moving to item five, report of the committee of the whole in camera session. Item five point one, at the April twenty-fifth session under municipal act as amended matters concerning the following items were considered. Now, it's item four point one, appointment of a director to the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation. Under the personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees exemption. And item five point one, proposed development on municipally owned parcel of land, and that was under the proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board. And a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality exemption under the act and at the in-camera session direction was given on both items.
Thank you.
Moving to item six, hearings of deputations and presentations, there are none scheduled. So moving to item seven, orders of the day. Item seven point one is a proclamation for the longest day of smiles, and there is a motion that Stratford City Council hereby proclaim June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two as the longest day of smiles in the city of Stratford to raise awareness and funds to help children born with a cleft condition obtain free, safe surgery to help them smile.
Moved by Council Vazalacos and Council Henderson, second discussion. Seeing none all in favor. Post Fanny, that's carried.
Item seven point two is correspondence, and it's a resignation from the Strapper Public Library Board. And there is a motion that the resignation of Shannon Dyke from the Strapper Public Library Board of Directors be accepted.
By Council Ingram and second by Council Ritzma, with the resignation be accepted. All those in favor. Post Fanny, that's carried.
Item seven point three is a resolution regarding amendments to the use of municipal resource during an election period policy. And there is a staff recommendation that policy C dot three dot fourteen, use of municipal resources during an election period as amended, be adopted as presented in report COU twenty-two dash zero three five.
Thank you, Council Clifford, receiving Council Gaffney, seconding discussion. Seeing none all in favor. Post Fanny, it's carried.
Item seven point four is a resolution regarding a tender award, and there is a staff recommendation that the tender T twenty twenty-two dash oh nine for the cell three B development be awarded to York One Environmental Limited at a total tender price of two million, four hundred and four thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents, including HST. That the additional five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollar and forty-nine cents expense required to commence with cell three B development be approved and the full cost of the project be funded using waste management capital reserve. That the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized sign the necessary contract agreement. That an exemption from section forty-six of the purchasing policy be granted in order to sole source contract administration and inspection services for the cell three B development construction project. And that Blue Metric Environmental Inc. be retained for contract administration and inspection services at an estimated cost of up to a hundred and fifty thousand, including HST.
All right, Hoover. Council Vazalacos, the second is Council Burbak, discussion. Council Henderson.
I was just wondering if we knew how many more cells we can fit in out there.
Mister. Crinkla, there you are. Turned over.
To the chair, we have the project manager, Nick Sheldon online. He might be able to answer that best.
Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Thanks for joining us.
Through your worship. To Council Henderson. The plant is five total cells, so we're at three B right now. They're not all the same size, so they can't say it's a unequal amount, but expected lifespan is another twenty-five years.
Thank you very much.
Anything further? If not, all those in favor. Post Fanny, it's carried. Thank you, Mr. Sheldon. Thank you, Mr. Crinkla.
Item seven point five is correspondings regarding a leave of absence, and this is to revise that Council Burbak has provided notification that she will be taking a leave of absence from May second, two thousand and twenty-two until June fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. And this is provided for the information.
Thank you, and all the best to Council Burbak.
Item seven point six is a resolution regarding proposed election sign amendments to the city's sign by law. And there is a staff recommendation that the amendments to the city's sign by law, one fifty-nine dash two thousand and four with respect to election signs provisions and housekeeping matters as outlined in report COU twenty-two dash zero three seven be adopted. And that the notice requirements are set out in notice policy C dot three dot ten for the proposed amendments to the sign by law be suspended.
Thank you. Who by Council Beatty, or sorry, Bunting, and seconded by Council Gaffney, discussion. Council Ingram and Council Seven.
Thank you. There's a reference in the report to the removal of third-party signage. I just wondered if we are deleting that entirely? And we're now going to allow third-party signage to occur within the city? If the report wasn't quite clear to me.
Through your worship, so the act provides that individuals, corporations, or trade unions can register as third-party advertisers for the purpose of promoting, supporting, or opposing a candidate or a question on the ballot. So with the amendments to the sign by law, we are just clarifying the definition for a third-party advertiser and then the additional requirements throughout the sign by law.
Thank you. So it's only in relation to election signage then, not full, flat signage throughout the city?
Correct. Just third-party advertising during an election.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, Council Seven and Council Vazalacos.
Thank you. I just had a question regarding number two and how that will impact signs or people wanting signs that are in favor or opposing issues when it's not an election cycle? If that's clear.
So through your worship, if I understand correctly, so signs would only be permitted during the election period?
Thank you. And so does this change what's currently in effect as far as if people are, you know, opposing provincial or federal or things that are going on when it's not an election cycle? Are they technically allowed to have signs right now, or is that or is that not changed from previous?
So through your worship, if I understand correctly, so the changing the definition of election sign is just to add additional clarification for what would be permitted throughout election periods, and that would be for municipal, provincial, or federal.
Okay, thank you. Council Vazalacos.
I've just had a comment around as we move down sort of the path of discussions around climate change and environmental impacts and and plastic science. I'm just wondering if on election signage could be something that we could refer to the Energy and Environment Committee? And I'm wondering whether Council Burbak and Council Henderson could bring it up to that committee to come for some recommendations for council around what we can do from a policy perspective to reduce the amount of election sign wastage. And it has, it has a potential for significant environmental impact. And if we're going to go down the path of, and we are going down the path of a climate emergency, the use of plastic science from fossil fuel sources is probably something we could look at.
Making a referral motion. Is there a second for that? Council Burbak. All right. So referral, all those in favor. Post Fanny, it's carried. So with the original, you're referring election signs to them. We still have the original motion with regards to this policy on the table. At this time, it has been moved and seconded. Is your nominations open next Monday? Council Vazalacos.
Sorry, were you looking for a mover and a seconder, or had it already been moved?
I believe it's already removed and seconded. So, all right, anything further? If not, all those in favor. Post Fanny, that's carried. Thank you.
Item eight is business for which previous notice has been given, and item eight point one is a notice of motion regarding the More Housing for Everyone Act. And at the April eleventh, our regular council meeting, notice was given that Council Ingram intended to put forward the motion on as noted on your agenda. I will note there is a slight amendment and would just ask through your worship if Council Ingram could maybe speak to the revised wording.
Council Ingram.
Thank you. Yes, so with very surprising and lightning quick speed, the provincial government in its wisdom found that they should move forward and give Bill one oh nine royal assent prior to the closing of the commenting period, which is still open. However, the bill has been approved or adopted, and so the very first line that says that Stratford City Council is concerned that the more housing for everyone act as proposed should be changed to as adopted. And further, I really want to know, I think some of us are aware of the implications to municipalities, but I really want to note the financial impacts that this is going to have because given our limited staff ability and the current workload. If the municipality has to start refunding application fees, given that timelines are not being met, it is going to have vast budgetary impacts on municipalities. So further to the motion that you have in your agenda right now, I'd like to add to it that the province ensures the need for meaningful consultation with municipalities on future initiatives to address municipal issues, including but not limited to housing affordability in Ontario be provided. In addition to full commenting periods, being that consultation on Bill one oh nine was not meaningful. And I would like this to be sent to AMO, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Minister of Finance, the Minister of the Attorney General, the Deputy Premier, the Premier, as well as our own representative Randy Pettigrew.
Thank you. So that's a notice of motion for for the next council meeting. So thank you, Council Ingram. Council Miss Defoe.
Through your worship, the notice was given at the last meeting, so Council Ingram would be putting this forward for consideration today.
Oh, sorry, I read that wrong, so I apologize for that. So the Council Ingram, you'll move that then. Thanks. Council Vazalacos will second it. Council Seven, Council Clifford.
Thank you. So I just asked for clarity. Are we the second piece that Council Ingram, you just added, would that be a separate thing, or is that or is that going to be all together? Or are we are we looking for two separate sort of letters being sent?
Miss Defoe.
So through the chair, it's my understanding it would be all one motion. And I would be happy to read it back for clarity if that would be helpful.
I'm okay without without you doing that, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Council Clifford.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from, I know we have reports from staff, but the staff agree with everything in here and is timing a problem like it? Is it gonna, like, what I understand, it's gonna help help have more houses. And I just heard today the price of houses in Canada on the average are twice as expensive as the state. So to bring this without, like, I know the staff gave report, but I'd like to hear from staff if if staff agrees with everything in this motion here.
Ms. Thompson, do you want it? Or Ms. Bridge, see Ms. Bridge there.
Through your worship, thank you, Council Clifford, for the question. I do think that Councilor Ingram's motion does accurately capture the issue. So much of a planning or development application is a dialogue between city staff, council, the public, and the developer. And with the requirement to refund application fees at that ninety-day timeframe, it really hinders the ability to have a meaningful dialogue, which could result in applications being refused because issues can't be resolved within that timeframe. And the city does not want to refund development applications. So I do think that Council Ingram's motion does accurately capture some of the potential issues with Bill one oh nine.
Vazalacos.
And just as a further to that, AMO's, I sit on AMO's housing task force, and I they would absolutely echo the concerns that Council Ingram has put forward. And if you look at their submission to the standing committee, a lot of those same issues were were presented at Queen's Park just a week and a half ago or so, before it was passed.
Council Ingram and Council Burbak.
Thank you. And just further to that, I think a lot of the impetus has been placed on the planning process in terms of housing affordability, and it doesn't take into account the fact that trades have been hard to come by. So you can open up any amount of land that you want and have any number of development applications coming forward, but if you can't get the trades to be able to build the houses, they're not going to happen. It also doesn't take into account the cost of materials and servicing, which is a vast impact on housing affordability. So there's a number of different you know, a number of different arms to this whole puzzle that just haven't been put into place, and it's really just placing a lot of out of the priority on the municipal planning process, and that's that's just one small part of this entire issue.
Council Burbak, I saw your hand.
Yes, thank you. There was also some industry studies done, and I mean, they weren't completed because the consultation process wasn't completed, but apparently this plan was made against the recommendations of a lot of experts in the field. And the other thing is that it received royal assent without even going to the floor of Queen's Park for any debate at all. So it's being rushed through, and it seems very unwise.
Yeah, thank you. There's nothing further. It's removed and seconded. All those in favor. Post Fanny, that's carried.
Item nine is report of the standing committees, and item nine point one is the report of the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee. And there are four items listed for consideration as follows. Item nine point one point one is the two thousand twenty-one annual water summary report to council. Item nine point one point two is the two thousand and twenty-two Stratford Municipal Airport Study Terms of Reference. And item nine point one point three also relates to the two thousand twenty-two Stratford Municipal Airport Study Terms of Reference. And then item nine point one point four is the request for exemption to the noise control bylaw for the Stratford Live Music and Food Event. And I would note Council Beatty did declare a key interest on item nine point one point four.
Council Vazalacos, will you move the report? And we'll separate nine point one four, seconder for that, Council Ingram. So nine point one point one, one point one, or point two and one point three. Council Clifford, you'd like to speak to it?
Yeah, I'd like to have nine point one point three, by itself.
Thank you, Council Seven.
I had the same request, and I just wanted to note that nine point one point three, I'll just be opposing it again just because of the costs.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's nothing further. I'll call the question on nine one one and nine one two. All those in favor. Post Fanny, that's carried. Nine one three, it's been moved and seconded discussion. Council Clifford.
Yeah, I'd like a clarification. I know we talked about last time, but it says that the study be completed independent from investor effort and destination. But the both organizations be consulted, and my question is, I'm not as smart as a lot of people here. How can it be independent and have consultation at the same time?
Well, you can have them give input, but they're not the authors of the final document. I think that's the easiest way to describe it. Council Seven, did you have something? Anything further? Not all those in favor. Post Fanny, that's carried. Nine one four is been moved and seconded. Council Beatty has declared an interest. Is there any discussion? Seeing none all in favor. Coast Fanny, that's carried. Thank you.
Item nine point two is the report of the Planning and Heritage Committee, and there's one item listed, and that's item nine point two point one, secondary suite registration by law.
Thank you, Council Ritzma and Council Vazalacos, moving in seconding discussion. Not all those in favor. Coast Fanny, it's carried.
Item nine point three is the report of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee, and there are five items listed for consideration as follows. Item nine point three point one is the two thousand twenty-one lottery license activity update. Item nine point three point two is the Destination Stratford two thousand twenty-two Q one update. Item nine point three point three is the review of current interest rate on unpaid taxes. Item nine point three point four is the two thousand and twenty-two community grant requests and recommendations. And then I will note item nine point three point five is also related to community grant recommendations specifically for Inner Chamber and Here for Now Theater Company, and Council Burbak did declare a key interest on this item.
Thank you. Moved and seconded by Council Gaffney and seconded by Council Seven, and we'll take the community grants separately. So with that in mind, we will call the question on nine three one, three two, three three, and three fours. Are any discussion? Seeing none all in favor. Post Fanny, that's carried. Nine three five, community grants and recommendations have been moved and seconded discussion. Seeing none all in favor. Post Fanny, it's carried.
Item ten is notice of intent, and there's none scheduled. So moving to item eleven, reading up the bylaws. There are four bylaws listed for consideration. Item eleven point one is the registration bylaw for secondary suites in the city of Stratford. Item eleven point two is to amend the fees and charges bylaw to include fees for registration of secondary suites. Item eleven point three is to award the tender for the landfill cell three B development. And item eleven point four is to amend the sign by law with respect to election sign provisions and housekeeping amendments. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Hoover for such, Council Bunting and Council Ingram. That they be taken collectively. All those in favor. Post Fanny, and that's carried. So we'll go to first and second reading of bylaws eleven, one, two, three, and four. Council Burbak and Council Vazalacos moving in seconding, first and second reading, discussion. Seeing none all in favor. Post Fanny, that's carried. Third and final reading for bylaws eleven, one, two, three, and four. Council Henderson and Council Gaffney, moving in seconding discussion. Seeing none all in favor. Post Fanny, that's carried. Thank you.
Item twelve is the consent agenda. Are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Seeing none.
Item thirteen is new business. Are there any new business items?
Council Ritzma.
Yeah, three, if I could, through your worship. First, I'd like to ask Director Crinkla, I had a call regarding the the condition of McManus Road, and if there is any work in the in the plans with regards to some care of that that road, particularly roadside on McManus.
You through the chair. Ditch work in the city is part of the collect works per view, and each year they do an annual spring inspection. And the work looking to improve the drainage will be part of that inspection at a time, and if there's remediation follow-up required, then that will be done subsequently.
Just as a follow-up, if I may, on that point, it's it's in beyond the ditch level towards the the playground area. There's a lot of water accumulation, so I'll share that. So thank you very much for that, Mr. Crinkla. And then if I could, through the chair as well, Marsh Pond, wondering if Mr. St. Louis can I received a call about water accumulation and drainage at that location, wondering if Mr.
Mr. Crinkla, I think the question is, there's drainage issues at Marsh Pond, and you could give us an answer, Mr. St. Louis, whichever one.
Through the mayor. We've had issues at Marsh Pond with drainage for several years. It's not currently in our capital plan, but we can certainly look at costing it out and included in future plans.
Thank you. And if I may, the last item, I just want to acknowledge Volunteer Week in Canada. In particular, I acknowledge all those individuals in Stratford that go above and beyond with regards to time and commitment with money to show love, compassion, and respect for so many in our community, and a big thank you to all those volunteers in our in our local community.
Thank you. Anything further? Not a motion, Council Henderson.
I'd just like to thank everybody. City organization organized the cleanup again this weekend. It's our twenty-first year because we had to miss the last two years, but I'd just like to thank everybody in the community that took the time to come out and help to clean up. Helps make our drains flow a lot better and makes our city a lot cleaner. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Motion to adjourn to reconvening Standing Committee, Council Henderson, Council Ingram. All those in favor. Post Fanny, planning and heritage is first. We'll turn it over to Council Ritzma.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Item number two, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Item three, there's no delegation schedule. Item four, reported the manager of planning, four point one, planning report zone change amendment application Z one two dash twenty-one with regards to municipal address of seven and nine Colbert Street. And I'm hoping that Ms. Bridge will bring us an overview.
Thank you through the chair. Just give me one moment, and I'll load up my slide deck here. Just confirming that everyone can see that okay before I begin. Wonderful, perfect. So you have before you this evening a zoning bylaw amendment. The file number is Z twelve dash twenty-one, and it is for seven and nine Colbert Street. So the application is requesting to amend the C three zoning at seven and nine Colbert Street to allow the existing buildings to be used as a dwelling unit that would occupy all of the floors of the building. In addition to that, in March of this year, a change to the zone change amendment was requested by the applicant to reduce the parking rate from for seven Colbert Street to zero parking spaces and for nine Colbert Street to one space. You can see on the screen in front of you an aerial view of the of the subject properties. They're located on the south side of Colbert Street between Erie Street and Waterloo Street South. The subject lands are currently being used as an inn, and the lands are surrounded by mixed-use commercial, a park, and apartment dwellings. The subject lands are designated as downtown core and located within the heritage area of the official plan. They are also located within the Heritage Conservation District that's designated under Part Five of the Ontario Heritage Act. And no exterior changes are proposed to either building. So our official plan permits a range of residential and retail uses in the downtown core. And it specifically permits residential uses in mixed-use developments, upper stories of commercial buildings, or in freestanding structures. In addition, increasing the diversity and number of residential opportunities is a goal and objective of the downtown core policies of the official plan. So the application conforms with the official plan through the provision of a residential use and a freestanding structure and contributes to the achievement of the downtown core goals and objectives by increasing the diversity and number of residential opportunities within this area. The subject properties are currently zoned. The subject properties are currently zoned central commercial C three, and they're located within the central business district. So the C three zone permits a variety of uses, including dwelling units above the first story where the first story is designed, used or intended for a commercial use. And so the requested zoning would permit a dwelling unit on the main floor of the building. And as mentioned earlier, a site specific regulation has also been requested to reduce the parking rate for both seven and nine Coburg Streets. Section five point six of the zoning bylaw outlines an exemption to the parking requirements for properties that are located in the central business district, such as the subject properties. Specifically, that exemption states that for any legally existing building, structure or use established on or before the effective date of the zoning bylaw, and provided there is no increase in the overall gross floor area of the lot, no parking spaces, barrier free parking spaces, loading spaces or bicycle parking spaces shall be required. So the requested parking exemption would formalize the parking exemption that's already granted to the subject property through the city's new comprehensive zoning bylaw as it's an existing building and no increase to the overall gross floor area is proposed. A notice of the application was sent to seventy two abutting property owners, agencies and internal departments on September twenty first, two thousand and twenty one. A notice was also included in the town crier on September twenty fifth of two thousand and twenty one, and a public meeting was held on October eighteenth of two thousand and twenty one. Agency comments that were received are outlined in the management report. In addition to those agency comments, one public comment was received regarding the adequacy of parking and the location of an existing wood burning fireplace. I've already went through that the the parking required and the reduction requested is already provided for through the zoning bylaw, and no physical changes are proposed to the building. In addition to that, the zoning bylaw does not regulate wood burning fireplaces. So staffer recommending that the application to permit the existing buildings to be used as dwelling units with site specific provisions related to parking be approved. And as it's consistent with the provincial policy statement and conforms with the official plan. That is all I have for you formally this evening, and I'd be pleased to take any questions that the committee has at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge. Questions? Seeing none? Thank you again. Now, the next item is a motion that the delegation of Scott Patterson and Robert Lemon regarding zone change amendments Z one two dash two one for the address of seven and nine Coburg Street be heard. Mover for that, please. Thank you, Councilor Ingram, second by Councilor Burbak. All in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. So I'm going to look to the clerk to see if we can bring our, there's Mr. Lemon, I see him. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, and I think Mr. Patterson is available too. So the floor is yours, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, and to the the Chair of the Committee and to the Mayor and councilors. You've seen me before, and I have really nothing to add to Ms. Bridge's report. Just to clarify that seven and nine are actually two separate lots, and so each building would be treated as an individual dwelling unit in the future. There's no change proposed at the time. It's running as an inn, seven and nine inn collectively. And just to note that I appreciate the the latitude in the parking status officially. I did add one parking space that never existed before in number nine. You recall that's Rundle's Restaurant. And so the building permit work that was recently completed back in November included adding a garage that never existed before on the on that site. So I don't have anything else to say other than to, if you have any questions, please let me know. And just to clarify that each site is separate lot and each could be individually a dwelling unit in its totality at some point in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Mr. Patterson, do you want to add anything at this time?
Good evening, committee members. Nothing further to add. You're in full support of the staff report and recommendation. And just to answer any questions if there were any tonight.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn to council members. Any questions for Mr. Lemon or Mr. Patterson? Councilor Gaffney?
I'm gonna make a motion on the staff recommendation.
Okay, so I will thank the gentleman for for being present tonight. And I'll receive Councilor Gaffney. We'll move the staff recommendation a seconder for that, and Councilor BD, thank you. Any other discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none? Call the question. All in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to four point two, five year review of the city of Stratford official plan, draft work, work plan and public consultation framework. And Ms. Bridge, I'll turn the floor back to you again.
Thank you through the chair. So as mentioned, you have before you this evening a report that outlines the scope work plan and public consultation framework for the five year review of the official plan. So the review is structured to be taken, undertaken in four phases and includes a scope of work that would satisfy the comprehensive review requirements of the provincial policy statement and also to address a number of items that have been brought forward by council. In addition to the the scope of work, there is a public consultation framework that's outlined there. So it's anticipated that public consultation would be continuous throughout the official plan review process. And staffer recommending that that public consultation go above and beyond the minimum requirements of the Planning Act and that we do some during each phase of the review and that it would likely involve a hybrid of both in-person consultation and using the city's online engagement platform. I'd be pleased to take any questions that the committee has at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge. Councilor Ingram.
Thank you. I just had two comments. Underface three, it says develop policies regarding climate change and climate action. I'd like to make sure that energy is also included with climate action and climate change. And then under, sorry, also underface three, it's a review of infilling in heritage areas and heritage corridor mapping and policies. I'd like to make sure that the titles for those designations are also reviewed as well because we know that there's been a lot of confusion in the public regarding designated heritage areas and then heritage areas and heritage corridors.
Thank you, Councilor Ingram. Anything further? Seeing none. So there is a staff recommendation that staff be directed to issue a request for proposal for consulting services for the five year review of the official plan and that staff be directed to schedule a meeting, a special meeting of council under section twenty six of the Planning Act. Mover for such? Thank you, Councilor Seven, second by Councilor Burbak. Any furthest? Councilor Seven, question?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if we need to add Councilor Ingram, or if that was her intention to add that, if that needs to be an amendment to the motion, or if it doesn't.
I'll look to the clerk. I think that was a request that that staff is has taken notes of. I'll look to the clerk to see if she would like to see that as part of a motion.
Through the chair, I would maybe just confirm with the manager of planning.
Thank you.
Through the chair, thanks for the question. Staff have made those notes, so are comfortable with proceeding without formal direction on that.
Thank you. It's the foe in this bridge. Any anything further? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And if there's nothing further than item number five, a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilor Clifford, seconded by Councilor Vazalacos. All in favor? And we're adjourned. Thank you.
I'd like to call the Social Services Committee to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature therefore? Seeing none? Subcommittee minutes are there for you to review that were held April the twelfth. We're for delegations. There's none scheduled. Number five is reported the manager of children's services, information on Canada-wide early learning and childcare funding agreement. Staff like to make a brief comment on that, please, Kim?
Thank you through the chair. The report was written to provide council with an update on the recently announced thirteen point two billion Canada-wide early learning and childcare agreement between the government of Canada and the province of Ontario. And this funding is to offset the cost to an average of ten dollars a day by September twenty twenty five. And a new wage floor to support recruitment and retention for qualified registered early childhood educators.
Thank you. This is welcome news and long overdue, that's for sure. I can remember many years ago, Hope Quebec was doing five dollar day daycare, and we were advocating for things. I was glad to see it's happening. So subcommittee recommendation that the report titled Information on Canada-wide Early Learning and Childcare Funding Agreement be received for information and that any follow-ups or alterations to the workforce funding line be committed to the Social Services Subcommittee accordingly. Looking for a mover? Councilor Bunting and Councilor Bacaloxis are sucking that. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Moving on to six point O, report of the Housing Stability Policy and Program Coordinator, definition of attainable housing. Go ahead, Kim.
Thank you through the chair. This was the direction of council to come back with a definition of attainable housing. So through the work of infrastructure and development, Stratford Invest and Social Services, we came up with a consistent definition that we are recommending to have common language when we refer to attainable housing. We drew the definition from the previous existing reports that have been presented to council. So you will see that the definition has already been used in our tenure housing and homelessness's plan as well as aligns with the Stratford Housing Project, a roadmap for attainable market housing development that Investor Act recently completed. So that's the update for that, and we're looking to adapt this definition.
Yes, I think it's it's a great idea to be called attainable housing because I know I've had many discussions with my friends about the difference between affordable and rent good income and different things, so. So that the following definition of attainable housing be adopted by the city of Stratford. Attainable house refers to housing that is affordable to the income level of the household, available for that household, appropriate to the circumstances of the household, including of suitable quality, actionable in that it is an option the household can put into action. I'm looking for a mover for that motion. Councilor Burbak and Councilor Richmond, second it. Any questions or comments on that? Councilor Ingram?
Thank you. I think you guys have done a really good job in crafting this definition. I I just want to be sure that there is going to be a way to measure attainable housing. I know your report talks about it, and there not being any one indicator to be able to to measure it. But somehow we'll have to come up with a way to be able to provide some feedback on whether we are actually creating attainable housing or not. The only way to do that is is to be able to measure it. So at some point, we'll have to come up with some some sort of indicators.
Thank you, Dan. Councilor Ingram. Anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Opposed of any? And that's Carrie. Thank you very much. And the next looking up is adjournment. Councilor Bacaloxis, Councilor Burbak, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much.
All right, council reconvene and I'll turn it back to clerk.
Through you, your worship. Item fifteen point one is declarations of peculiar interest. Are there any declarations made at Standing Committee to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Burbak? Councilor BD, so yours were covered off in the earlier part of the evening. They were none at the last two subcommittees. We're good. We'll go on to the next one then.
Item fifteen point two is reading of the bylaws, and there is one bylaw listed, and that's bylaw eleven point five, the confirmatory bylaw. And it requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
That's moved by Councilor Vazalacos and Councilor Bunting. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Third and final reading. Councilor Seven and Councilor BD, moving third and final reading of the confirmatory bylaw. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. And a motion to adjourn this evening's proceedings. Councilor Ingram and Councilor Burbak, all those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's Carrie. Thank you.